Good morning. We are here for our weekly board session. It's Wednesday, February 12th. It's nine o'clock in the morning. We're in the Senator hearing room at 555 Court Street Northeast. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you please join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have any public comment, and so we're going to move right into our consent agenda. And Commissioner Cameron.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a good morning. It's always good to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Always.
Well, as I say, we almost got all blue. I didn't get the memo to get the the blue.
You just marched the beat of your own drummer.
My own drummer. Yeah. All right. Here we go. Let's beat that drum. Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent calendar first. Under Business Services, approve an order appointing Todd Merklin and reappointing Mary Beth Allen and Randy Leos to the Marion County Compensation Board with terms ending December 31st, 2020. Under Community Services, approve an order appointing Josh Graves and reappointing Patricia Alfhoffen and Deputy Chief George Burke to the Marion County Children and Families Commission with terms ending February 29th, 2024. Under Public Works, schedule final consideration to adopt an administrative ordinance for February 19th, 2020 granting zone change comprehensive plan subdivision, ZCCP sub, case number 18-002, Christ Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. And finally, under Tax Office, approve an order designating the Woodburn Independent as a newspaper for publication of 2020 tax foreclosure list. That's it.
Second?
A motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Next up, we have Jeff White and Camber Schlag, or just Camber. We're going to consider approval of an ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules in the Marion County Code, Chapter 3.25, Section 3.25.030, declaring an emergency. Camber, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Camber Schlag. I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager in the Finance Department, and I am before you this morning requesting three changes to our Marion County Public Contracting Rules. We are requesting that these be approved as an emergency because they were effective on January 1st of 2020. The first change is on page 16 of the Public Contracting Rules. It is adding, it is changing the definition from the Oregon Procurement Information Network to Oregon Buys. The state of Oregon has procured a new electronic procurement system, and it's called Oregon Buys. The county uses it to post their solicitation, so we are requesting the change as well. The second change is a reflection of House Bill 2769. This allows local contracting agencies, such as the county, to solicit using pricing in the county selection procedures for architects and engineering. In the past, we have not been able to get pricing or cost proposals from consultants until we were during, doing the negotiation phase of the solicitation process, which is at the end after we have selected a number one candidate. This allows us to receive cost proposals during the initial phase of the RFP process. The third change is a reflection from House Bill 2415, which requires the county to place retainage on a construction contract in an interest-bearing account. So we have added language to our rules indicating that the contractor can select an interest-bearing account, an escrow-bearing interest account, or a bond. We also have made other minor changes throughout the documents, such as spelling corrections, grammatical changes as well. Do you have any questions for me today?
I don't.
Since I don't hear any questions, Chair Willis, I'd like to make a motion that we read the ordinance by title only twice.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. An ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules in Marion County Code, Chapter 3.25, Section 3.25.030, and declaring an emergency. An ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules in the Marion County Code, Chapter 3.25, Section 3.25.030, declaring an emergency.
Now, Chair Willis, I'd make a motion. We approve the ordinance that amends Marion County Public Contracting Rules, Marion County Code, Chapter 325, 325030, and declare an emergency.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Camber. All right. Next up, we have Sidney.
Mr. Chair, can I slow this down? This is going to be a record board session.
Yeah. Would you like to take a little bit longer?
I don't know. Take your time.
Ryan, are you coming up here too, or no? Just Sidney? Okay. I would consider approval of the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $179,700 for the county to perform parent-child interaction therapy services through June 30th, 2021. Welcome, Sidney.
Hi, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sidney Nestor, the Behavioral Health Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services, here today to ask us to allow receipt of these funds for parent-child interaction therapy. Parent-child interaction therapy is what's considered a high fidelity model, meaning it's been well researched and validated nationally and internationally, and it tells us that if we follow certain specific steps and processes that we get really positive outcomes. Parent-child interaction therapy serves children ages two to seven and their primary attachment caregiver. It's a really great treatment intervention in which the parent and the child are in a room. The parent has an earpiece in his or her ear, and the clinician, who's been trained and credentialed in PCIT, sits on the other side of a one-way glass and coaches the parent. The focus really being on building attachment between the parent and the child. It's a very effective treatment intervention. Average length of stay is about six months. In addition to the treatment services by the therapist, a skills trainer also works with the parent during the week just to reinforce the skills. We've got, on average, we serve about 250 children every year. We have four clinicians. Two are bilingual, bicultural Spanish. We've got clinicians in Woodburn and in our Salem office. That's the program. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Sidney?
Well, I'm just, I'm not sure if I follow, but it says, "Costs related to unserved areas of Oregon." We're providing these services outside of Marion County. What is?
No, I think just, Woodburn is where we have a, we have a lab in Woodburn.
I didn't read the whole thing, so I was hoping that was true.
I have some comments. I got to go and see this, and I really appreciate it. And sometimes, you know, things like parenting or family, social interaction can seem like we should just know them. Like, we shouldn't have to learn them.
I did. That was perfect.
Oh, were you?
Oh, yeah.
Wow, you're the first.
My daughters aren't watching. They'll tell you otherwise.
I remember with my daughter, she was very shy. She's now six, but I think she was maybe three or four, and we were at a playground, and she desperately wanted to go play with the kids at the play structure, but she was too afraid to. And I remember she went to my wife and her mom and said, you know, "How do I want to go play with these kids?" And my mom said, "Why don't you do it?" And she said, "Well, I'm afraid." And my wife said, "Well, all you have to do is say, 'Hello, my name is Anya. Would you like to play with me?" And, and she said, "I said that," and so she went and she just to say this to these kids. And I was thinking the whole time, "Man, I hope they say yes." My whole trust, the trust she's going to have in me is all dependent on this. And sure enough, she said it, and the kids said, "Yeah," and she had a great time, and sort of she became much less shy as a result of that. So sometimes, we do need to be taught some, some of these things, and I think it can be very valuable to have somebody sort of say, "Hey, why don't you try this way of interacting with people?"
Right.
Or try this, and it can really change people's lives.
And I think many of the parents we serve maybe didn't have opportunities for great modeling. We learned how to be parents in lots of ways by what, how our parents interacted with us. And so if that relationship has been disrupted, or wasn't really a positive one, then it's, you're right, it's just a skill you have to learn. And if you haven't had an opportunity to do it, it's not really your fault. You've got to be given that opportunity.
It's, it's great that we, we can teach people that. It's wonderful.
So Commissioner Cameron wants this meeting to go longer, so then I get to tell a story. You have five kids. I'm telling a story. Do you mind? So we agree right off after we got married that we'll be consistent in our parenting and back each other up. So, yeah, she consistently turned them against me. She, even to this day, they want to talk to somebody, they come to her. But I'm firm and consistent in my own right, so.
It's easy to blame somebody else, you know.
I think I could have used some training.
Everyone can use it. It's valuable, valuable skills to learn and be reminded of, even when we know what we should do at the moment.
I think the quote is, "Just ignore what he thinks."
Is that right?
Yeah. It worked.
Well, I just, I loved your story about your daughter and being more outward and not being as shy. We only have, how many more months left with this guy?
Oh, like ten?
Nine, ten?
See, some animals only live for like one day. It's a, it's a lifetime.
We need to take him to a playground and have a.
He's going to play nice.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's important. Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, Mr. Chair. I will move that we approve incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $179,700 for the county to perform parent-child interaction therapy services through June 30th, 2021.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Sidney.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Commander Carvandi, and we are going to consider approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract for Services with the Center for Hope and Safety, adding $64,760.36, total of $253,311.36 for victim services. Commander Carvandi?
Morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the board. For the record, Commander Kevin Carvandi, Sheriff's Office, Community Corrections Division. And today, we are actually adding back some funding to a contract, which is, we're very thankful for with the Center for Hope and Safety. And this is directly tied to our JRI supplemental funding. I know the board is very familiar with justice reinvestment, justice reinvestment funding, but just real quick on some of the JRI requirements around the funding. We are bound by adhering to the four goals of justice reinvestment, as we're aware, reducing recidivism, reducing our prison population, holding our offenders accountable, and enhancing public safety. In addition to that, there's also a 10% requirement that we need to allocate funds to community-based nonprofit organizations in the community that to provide services to victims. As you're aware, the Public Safety Coordinating Council oversees our justice reinvestment program. There are two approved programs that we are providing funding to, is the Center for Hope and Safety and Liberty House. Center for Hope and Safety provides services to victims of sexual assault, domestic violence, stalking, and human trafficking. I know the board's also aware of some of the shortfalls, funding shortfalls of community corrections over the, well, currently, over the 2019-21 biennium. Unfortunately, Center for Hope and Safety was not immune to those reductions, as JRI funding is associated with them as well. I believe they, they took at least a partial or a full-time, a cut of a full-time employee or a position, if I remember correctly, it's the, I think it was the bilingual court advocate position.
Yeah.
And so now that our justice reinvestment funds have come in, we actually do know what the supplemental amount is. The Public Safety Coordinating Council was in support of allocating the 10% to victim services under the supplemental grant to go to Center for Hope and Safety, which is the $64,000. And they have, they've been phenomenal partners for us. The, the type of work that they do is very, very difficult, but very, very important, and we are, they provide the services to the victims of our folks on supervision, and we definitely appreciate them of all the hard work that they do. And they are, they're the subject matter experts when it comes down to providing trauma-informed best practices advocacy services to the victims of crime. And I'll just cover just a couple things in terms of some of the services. And by all means, I'm not the expert of all the things that they do, but definitely worth mentioning. They provide a 24-hour crisis line, an emergency confidential shelter, and emergency transportation, crisis intervention and safety planning, walk-in advocacy services and support groups, assistance with protection orders, accompaniment to hospitals and court, which is really, really important, and a variety of community education presentations. And I know I'm just scratching the service of, services of, the surface of what they provide, but they're phenomenal partners, more than deserving of the additional funds, and albeit, it's not that much, especially when you take into consideration spread across the biennium, but I think every little bit helps. And that's all I have available for any questions.
Questions?
So just, Kevin, this, we didn't split this up between the two organizations, right? We just added this because of that funding.
Yes, the.
Right? That's what we decided.
Yeah, basically, we had the, in terms of the applications, two parts. The main application, we did do the 50/50.
Right.
Supplemental, we just went all with Center for Hope and Safety to come up with it, 64.
Restore that.
Yes, sir.
Restore that position. And, Mr. Chair, and you were over, I think this morning, at the Capitol, testifying on a court care bill, and this, this position is similar. It all goes together with the victim services and that court care bill, having people be able to have their children drop off and taking good care of why somebody's appearing before courts, whether it's for a domestic violence case or any of those types of things. So this kind of all runs together in the whole efficiency of our court system and the safety of our victims, et cetera, so.
And they were there to support the court care bill as well this morning.
Good. Great. So, thank you.
Pretty easy one. Chair Willis, I'd make a motion. We do approve Amendment Number One to Contract for Services with Center for Hope and Safety that adds $64,760.36 for victim services.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Commander.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it for our agenda this morning. And so Sam, I think it's, sorry, Commissioner Brantano, I guess you'll turn to the calendar if you would.
All right. Is that all? You just wanted to give these first. Thank you, Chair Willis. In this coming week, the places and events that we'll be at together include, I've got to think where this is. It's already passed. I'll start with our board session. We're just completing this afternoon, 11:30, Salem State of the City Address, Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. Three o'clock to four, meet with health and human services employee, Commissioner's Library, fifth floor, 555 Court Street Northeast. And then at 4:30, Orla Taste, Oregon Legislative Reception, also at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street in Salem. Tomorrow morning, 7:30, monthly meeting with Kaiser, Marion County, Sherry's Restaurant. I know it's not the fifth floor on Court Street, but it's on River Road. I know that much. And then Thursday afternoon, 9 to 11, a work session, Marion County Integrated Water Resources Plan, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. That's followed in the afternoon at 1:30 with an executive session pursuant to ORS 1926602D, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor of this building. Close, an observance of presence day, and the river's going to be too high to fish. What a waste of a nice day. On Monday, Tuesday, calendar review, 8:30, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor of this building. Tuesday, the 18th, management update, 9 o'clock to 11, again, Silverton Conference Room. And then the first of the year, at 2 o'clock to four, Budget Committee Meeting, Senator Hearing Room, first floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Still on Tuesday at 3:30, a community leader roundtable with Congressman Kurt Schrader. That'll be at the Chameca Center for Business and Industry, 626 High Street Northeast, Room 203, in Salem. Then a very interesting event, especially this year, Wednesday at 7, Sedcor Ag Breakfast in the Fest Hall and 500 Wilco Highway Northeast at Mont Angel. We've moved, we're moving the board session. We'll talk about that next to 10 o'clock. We still won't be able to stay for the whole event, but we, I and we wanted to catch as much as possible. The board session at 10 o'clock here in the Senator Hearing Room on Wednesday, the 19th, and that's followed at 12:30 with a jobs council meeting, Willamette Workforce Partnership Boardroom, 626 High Street Northeast and Suite 305. And the last event in this next seven days is Wednesday at 6 o'clock, the COG Annual Meeting and Awards Dinner, and that'll be in the Kaiser Community Center, 9:30, Chamaulaw Road Northeast in Kaiser. That's everything.
Mr. Chair.
Page and a half.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but there is another typo on this. On your executive session on Thursday, it is pursuant to ORS 192660 subsection H, not 2D.
Not DH?
Yes.
So noted. On Thursday, February 13th.
Why don't you just list them all always? Seems like most of them are that it's covered.
Okay, so on Thursday, February 13th, at 1:30, we'll have our executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660H. Thank you. We had a busy morning this morning. We were running everywhere. Mr. Cameron, you were at a, at a presentation on the economy around here.
Yeah, the, the SVN Economic Forum. Yeah, if you, if you want to, it was really a couple interesting things. I got some notes here that I took that I thought stood out. The office market overview in Salem, Class A office space is really tight. Rent growth in Class A office space in the last year was up 6.5%, but Class B and C was like 0.04%. So there's this need for Class A office space, and very expensive to build. He talked, the other thing Kurt talked about was the average sale price of office space was, I want to say, I want to, I want to say it was like $154 a foot, or $154 a foot. But to build a Class A office space, you're talking $300 a foot. So people are buying those and trying to upgrade them and get them within those rents. Cheryl Wolf from Salem Health talked about them being the largest employer, and again, I don't know if you, either of you were at the Chamber on Monday, but as a repeat of what she talked about at the Chamber, $1.35 billion impact a year to the economy in Salem and the surrounding area. And then the last thing that I was able to stay for, that I thought was very interesting, was the agricultural economic input, or, yeah, of the valley, the Willamette Valley. There was more capital investment made in the last year when they deregulated the hemp market, or made hemp legal. I want to say they had a slide up there that was between $200 and $500 million of investment in that particular area. Obviously, we know about this because of the processing. They didn't have enough processing set up. The guy said there's various, small percentage, very small percentage, if any, that have received any dollars from their hemp investment and product. You know, I remember driving up the, the back way to Aurora and just seeing the stuff rotting. I mean, they just, they were just cutting it down rotting in fields because they didn't have the process. But he said that investment, he had the slide up there, that investment of, let's say, 200 million, if you take the bottom, is as much as, or potentially more than in the last 10 years in hazelnuts that we've seen the expansion. That's how fast that boom was. And that NORPAC, on the end, he showed a slide of the acreage of vegetables in Oregon, how it's been declining because of other regions and production, and that NORPAC, even though it's a bad thing that's happened to probably those farmers that didn't get paid, the employees are working. Everybody's, you know, pretty much in this economy, you can get a job. That it was, it's a very small hit on the overall economic impact to the agricultural market. There's a lot of people that want to sell currently. They're, they're, and the people that want to sell are usually because of, they don't have heirs that are going to take over the farm. And there's a lot of buyers. People that want to sell because of the return that we've been getting has been substantial in the agricultural land, want to sell it up here. People that want to buy, want to buy down here. So there's not a lot of transactions right now. The ones that are, you can see the graph of transactions down, price per transaction up. Very interesting information that's, that's happening more on a global perspective in our particular market. It was good. I didn't, I wasn't able to stay. I've got a couple brochures upstairs, but it will be on CCTV. He announced that, that CCTV was there. Allied was there, and they'll be running it.
It was a full crowd.
It was packed.
Just the beginning, and oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it was.
The whole town was there.
It was packed. So they do a good job. We had, the mayor kicked it off. Were you there when the mayor kicked it off?
Pretty good.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to his State of the City.
He was pretty blunt about changes that needed to be made. I'm just going to say that.
Well, regarding what? I'm sorry.
City Council.
Oh, oh, really?
Oh, yeah. And, you know, the state of the county, he said, you know, he promoted that, or state of the city this, today at lunch. He says it's pretty darn good, except for a couple issues that we are having trouble dealing with, right? So, yeah, it was, it was over. And then Tom Hoffert from the Chamber chaired, US Bank was the title sponsor, and there's, there's a lot of good things going on. We've got some issues that, that stand out, that everybody's concerned about, that there's behind the scenes. Good economic growth, as we well know.
Yeah. You know, I was talking, I was reading this article in the Capitol Press yesterday about blockchain, and how blockchain's being used to track products from the field, because, you know, if something goes bad at Walmart, or the grocery store, or Roth's, you don't necessarily know.
Where?
Which farm, or was it good coming out of the farm, but the trucking they had at the wrong temperature or something? You know, how do you preserve your, your products? And having one.
Food safety.
Ledger, yeah, that you can, you can go back in time, in real time. You know, everyone can see what happened. A big technological advance happening.
You know, I have some thoughts, and I'm not trying to criticize anybody, but just in my life, I've thought it was wrong. Here in the Marion County, Willamette Valley, in the richest farm ground temperate climate, we should be growing feed to feed the world, is my thought. And then, and that was in response, watching the transition to grass. It seemed, well, I know you go where the market is, and now as it goes to hemp and stuff, it even, but you have to, you have to go with what sells. I don't know. I'm wrong, but I wish it was different.
Grass seed was the, and it was interesting, because I couldn't stay for questions, but I always thought, in Marion County, I thought the nursery was the number one producer, and I, I think he was just.
I think they've said that in the past.
Well, Willamette Valley, but he, he was featuring grass seed, and he had graphs up there about price and the amount of, you know, production. And it's still a really, really strong market, the strongest market. But you could see the dips in it when they had the reception, recession, and people stopped building, and, but grass seed was talked about quite a bit.
One of the things I've learned from the farmers is, you know, one of the things they like about grass seed, or nursery, and probably hemp's in the same boat, is they like having crops that move differently. So, you know, grass seed is tied to the housing market. It's not necessarily tied to the.
Nursery would be too, mostly.
Right. So they like having crops that are tied maybe to the food market, and then crops that are not tied to the food market, are tied to housing. So that way, if the food market crashes, they still have, or if the housing market crashes, they still have food that's keeping them up, you know? So I think some of it is just trying to manage risk, because so often, they're price takers, not price setters, and that can put a lot of pressure on.
Terms of vegetables, kind of know what happens. I had a little example of it last night. Well, canned, frozen vegetables are good, but you can kind of get things year-round now. In fact, last night, I won't give the brand, but Tammy brought home a package of green beans and made my favorite summer recipe.
February. How cool is that?
They weren't quite as good. But, so, things change, and you're not relevant anymore.
Well, and my, I remember my dad says, you know, when he was growing up in New York, basically you'd have no fresh food or vegetable in the winter. So he definitely sees it as just amazing.
And canned was.
Yeah, he said, he remembers when people went to.
Yeah, he said he remembers when people went to frozen, and how it was such a big deal. Frozen was so much better than canned food, you know? But yeah, how cool is it now that you can have fresh, fresh fruit and vegetables all year round? That's really something.
Don't know what it means, it just is.
Are either of you scheduled, this is, to go to the Salem City Club next week from Friday to hear the Covant, Solid Waste Management? Okay.
I'll pick that up.
Is there some interesting dialogue going back and forth I can go in?
I need to know. I have an interview apparently with OPB on the subject tomorrow, so I'd be interested in anything that relates, what's been said.
Okay. Good, I'm glad you're going to be there. So I'll be out of town.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? We're adjourned.